Okay, then I'm gonna call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the class. Okay, we have two hearings, public hearings planned tonight. We are going to start with the district-wide safety plan hearing. The way to do this is similar to the way we did a budget hearing. We have the questions that were emailed in to our district clerks, Debbie Carter, that I believe we'll begin with. Then if any attendees have a question or comment, raise your Zoom hand, and Dr. D'Angelo will move you to a panelist to make your comment. Okay?
Just Rachel, explain the, raise the hand.
Down at the bottom of the Zoom meeting, well, I guess it depends what device you're on. If you're on a laptop.
You gotta open up participants.
Yeah, you gotta open up participants, and then next to your name, you should be able to raise your hand. I believe if you're on an iPad, or a tablet, or a phone, you have to like, kind of tap it to get the top screen in order to raise your hand.
And sometimes if you don't see the raise your hand icon, there's three dots, ellipses, where you click on that, and that will give you more options.
Okay, so let's begin with questions for the district-wide safety plan hearing. Debbie, did you have a question that was emailed into us?
Actually, I have it.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
So as per the requirement, we posted the notice that we were having a public hearing on our district-wide safety plan, as we've done in previous years. And as a result of that, we had one person from the public, Mr. Dave LeVoe, indicate a suggestion. He is suggesting that in the area that's labeled "emergencies include but are not limited to", that we also include "train slash railroad", which would be very specific and unique to Chatham situation. And I believe that we should entertain that as a modification. I think it's totally appropriate to add it to this list.
I think since, just to add the train slash railroad to the emergency.
The political list of.
Event not limited to section.
Right. Now, remember, the board is not gonna vote tonight. This is just to hear public comment. What you will do at the reorganization meeting, should you agree to add, modify this item, we will add that and present it to you at your organizational meeting for annual adoption.
Would you read that one more time, please?
So in the plan, there's an area, a category, that says "emergencies include but are not limited to", and it's a list of bolded items like air pollution, flood.
Yeah, I read, I read that, but what's the new one?
This gentleman, Mr. LeVoe, is suggesting we add one called "train slash railroad" as an eventual emergency.
I think a good suggestion. Do we wanna go around and get consensus to adding that?
We will need to talk, further discuss the train slash railroad. This has been a topic for a long time. We've tried to get people from the railroad. And Muriel can remember some of the heated conversations, but we should look back in some of our notes when we get to discussing the railroad from years past.
Well, let me, so this is simply just to list it as an item in the district-wide safety plan, the plan that's publicly available. Frank, I think what you're speaking to is, as we get to build our emergency response plan, then make sure that that's an item that's adequately addressed.
Exactly, all right.
We have had discussions with our security consultant, security and safety consultants in terms of that particular issue.
Does everybody understand that it's just adding "train slash railroad" to that one section? The emergencies included but not limited to section. Right? Okay, so Muriel, are you for or against that? Okay, Pat, how about you? Matt?
For.
Meg?
For.
Craig?
I think we need, I think we, before we add it, we need to talk to our attorney, because there was something about adding that in the past, so.
To the district-wide emergency plan?
Yes. And I can't tell you right now, I can't remember exactly why we were supposed to stay away from that whole deal. I don't know if Mike can remember, or Muriel, or Lucas even, but there was something from our past that prevented us from including that, and I'm sorry, I can't remember. So I mean, I don't know if we approve that right now and then find out why we can't, if that's real, real smart.
It's simply a public hearing, so we could just entertain that as information at this point. I could do a little more research with our legal advisor, and then we can certainly decide at the reorganization meeting whether we wanna add it or not, or delay approval of the plan.
And to be honest with you, Sal, Pam may not have the problems that our past law firm had. But Mike, do you remember any of that discussion in the past?
I wasn't, I wasn't there for that piece.
Okay. Muriel?
Yeah, I do. I do remember not including them, but I didn't know, this seems a very small thing to be putting in the, in the safety plan itself, but I have no problems. We're not voting on it tonight, and I would, I would let Sal do the research.
I think it was a small turn, but it opened up a huge problem.
Let's be cautious and.
Pam may not see any new problems with it that our old law firm saw.
Okay.
So I just, you know, if we wanna move on and tentatively include it, then I'm for it. But we do have to research.
Okay.
I hadn't been there in the past.
And does it have to go on the July 7th organizational meeting? Does it have to be approved at the next one, is I guess my question?
I, I know there's the requirement for the public notice in the hearing. As to whether you adopt it in July or the following meeting, I will check on that. I would think that's less problematic than in the past. Districts did not have, it posted and did not go through the process of a public hearing.
It may be a real, it may be a real simple answer.
Okay. So we'll look into it more, and if we're able to include it on the July 7th, I think it is meeting, I guess we'll move forward. For the attendees, that was our only email question, right?
That's correct.
Okay. For the attendees, if you have questions or comments now on the district-wide safety plan, if you could raise your Zoom hand, so we can make you panelist. Any questions? Okay, and doesn't appear we have any questions.
May I say, I was not asked, but I would like to indicate that I am for it.
Okay, thank you, Denise. I think we're gonna do a little bit more research, and then either, depending on where that research leads, bring it back to discussion and approval. Okay, so at this time, can I have a motion to adjourn the district-wide safety plan hearing?
Motion?
Can I have a second? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move right into the code of conduct public hearing. Do we have any email questions to begin with?
We don't.
We don't, okay. So do any of the attendees have a question or comment? Not seeing any raised hands. So can I have a motion to adjourn the code of conduct public hearing?
Motion?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and call a regular meeting to order. Can I have a motion for approval of the present agenda?
Motion. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we are going to move into the board recognition section of the agenda. And for the first two, I'm going to hand that over to Dr. D'Angelo.
Thank you. This is a little awkward and strange, because we typically would do this in person, so it's not to detract from its significance for the meaning behind our recognition or acknowledgement of these, of the service of these employees. But this evening, it is my pleasure to recognize three of our retiring employees. They actually represent three different areas of the district. First, we have Mr. Steve Silverman, a longtime science teacher, has celebrated 30 years with us. I know many of you know Steve. He has performed outstanding for us. Our student results have been stellar, including the physics program that he's run. And he is now, I guess as of today, officially retired. So we'd like to thank Steve for his dedication and his service. He will be missed. Second, Susan Mancini, a bus driver, also retiring. She served us for 12 years. We certainly appreciate all the hard work that our drivers do to make sure that our students get to and from school safely. And many of our drivers stepped up during our COVID closure and delivered food to, to our students, and we are certainly grateful, and we wish Suzanne good health and a pleasant retirement. And last but not least, Stephen Nito, our director of facilities, who just also recently retired. Steve served us for 10 years. He was a valuable part of the operations and maintenance team. He helped us, at least in my tenure, bring together the current capital project. Many mornings, Steve and I, 5:00 AM, discussed whether we could open or close school because of snow removal, and I don't remember an occasion where the answer was that our property wasn't ready for students to arrive if we had chose to do so. So we'd like to also wish Steve good health in his retirement. And that concludes the recognition of our retirees for this school year.
Congratulations to all of them. I had Silverman when I was in school, so well earned.
Do we have electricity then? Oh, wait.
I used to have to jive to school.
Use an abiscus or abacus for math? The, and we will, we do have certificates for these employees, and we will mail them out at this point, so they'll have, have, have that. The second, I guess I have to do this. Honoring of a departing board member. I, our, our wonderful current president, Rachel Galvin, after serving three years with us, is certainly not retiring, but leaving the board. I, from a personal perspective, it's been a pleasure to work with Rachel. What I love most about her is we don't always agree. And, and that's made things better. She pushes me, and I push her, and we certainly have learned from each other, and I appreciate that. As you as board members know, it's a tireless job. Meetings and phone calls and emails and staying up to speed. And I think often the public doesn't see the countless hours that all of you put in to make sure that this district is as good as it can be, and the commitment that you have to the community and to the students of Chatham. So on behalf of the administrative team, the superintendent, and I know the entire board, we really appreciate your service, and we know you won't be a stranger.
And you wish I was, but.
You can't have everything, but no, we, I certainly appreciate your service. We, when you can leave something better than you found it, it's, you should be, find a sense of accomplishment. You know, a particular note, the board handbook and a number of other policies and procedures organizing the, organizing our materials and presentations, a lot, a lot of the good has come from your work, so thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a certificate for you, too.
Look for it.
To be properly displayed in your living room. I don't know, this is probably not a bad place if the board wanted to, you know, make a comment.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Sal, and, and board. Appreciate it.
And we're going to now turn it back to you to do the second, too.
Yes, so we are also going to honor our very own Morgan Simmons, who is graduating this year, who I got to sit next to most of the year before we had to start doing these Zoom meetings.
You think she's graduating? She's, we haven't conferred graduation yet.
Yeah, you don't have your diploma yet.
Anything else we need her to do?
You've done a great job, and we really appreciate that. Thank you so much, Morgan. We really wish.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Final decision, what you're doing next year?
Um, next year, in the, well, in the fall, I'm going to SUNY Oneonta to do accounting and business, so, yeah.
Go Red Dragons.
Yes.
All right.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we're also going to, we wanna mention Winnie Legere, a former board member, who has served on the Chatham Public Library Advisory Committee for the last two years, I believe. Thank you very much, Winnie. No, you're not intendant, but we really appreciate everything she's done for this district. And.
We have a certificate for Winnie that will mail her as well.
Okay, I'm sure that will go above for a mantle also. Okay. Okay, so we are moving on to board comment. Do any board members want to make a comment at this moment? Anybody? Okay. If we are good to move.
Beth, you all set?
Yeah, I'm ready to talk.
I'm sorry, Beth, you were, I, you were off the screen there. Go ahead, Beth.
Okay, a couple of things that I'd like to suggest. Really, in our public, our school board meetings lately, we haven't had a place for public comment the way we have during our, you know, like the handbooks that we just went over, or the code of. Yeah. So I think that might be something we might want, might wanna consider going forward.
I believe you will. So that was due to the executive order. I think it's Executive Order 202 that expires on June 26th. So that's been for the last three months, that executive order, and then starting in July, I believe you'll go back to that. Is that correct, Sal?
It is, and as a board, we're gonna have to discuss what the future meetings look like. Many districts beginning this month have gone back to some modified face-to-face. But your point is well taken, Beth. I think they may be going face-to-face socially distanced, but I still don't know if they're allowing the public. We might have to figure out how the public comes in remotely. So that is something that the board would have to take into consideration.
Okay, and I have one other comment I'd like to make. I know that as the, as school year is wrapping up, we've all been talking, you know, you've been talking with the administrators and the teachers and the TAs and all about how, you know, how their successes and the things that they think they might wanna work on further. I was wondering and thinking that it might be a good idea if we could do some kind of a Survey Monkey, to go out to the parents to see what kind of experience they and their children have had in the virtual learning time.
Absolutely. I'm sure anytime we can, or anytime that we can get feedback from our parents and our students, I think that's a valuable data point. So we can, we can work on that. I know that, I think there's some models out there from other districts. I'm going to make, also make some comments during one of my superintendent's reports about some preliminary work for next year.
Was there anything else, Beth?
No, that's all.
Okay. Anybody else? Let me scroll through. Okay, no other comments? Then we are going to hand it back over to Dr. D'Angelo for the superintendent report, starting with the year-end progress briefing on the current goals and action items.
Okay, I just need to go back to. Okay. So a couple general comments before I get into my three areas, which are to give a little bit of an update on the year-end, progress on year-end goals and action items. Talk a little bit about professional development plan that we typically have, professional development people do in person in the past, and a little bit of preliminary information on some of the conversations that we're having in anticipation of next school year, and specific to that, some of the challenges in terms of guidance that we need to move forward as well. So needless to say, that the last time I spoke to the goals and action items was January, before our world kind of was turned upside down. And we were making some decent progress on, on some of these. And I'm going to just throw up a slide where I'm going to do what I've done in the past, which is, we have some detailed spreadsheets that include our four goals, our fiscal, our wellness, our academic, and our safety. And then if you recall, for the benefit of people, oh, that's not, sorry, I got too big here. For the benefit of those who don't understand our structure, not on the board but the people viewing, we have something called priority objectives. We've identified, over the last couple of years, a minimum of three priority objectives under each of these big four categories. And then typically in the summer, the administrative team sits and starts to develop through the summer and fall, action items to help us reach those objectives. And then we track those to see how we're making progress. And we, last reported to the board in January, and fully expected to have made some progress on some of those items between now and then. Of course, COVID came along and derailed this on many, but not all, of some of our action items and objectives. What I've done, similar in the past, is I'm not taking painstakingly through line by line all those spreadsheets. We will post it on the drive in the coming days. But what I did in January, and I thought I'd do this evening, is just pick a few from each of the categories to give you some highlights. Our fiscal goal had always been very oriented to the capital project and the maintenance of our facilities. So, and the fiscal stability of the district, and our reserve planning, and all the wonderful work that the finance committee has done over the last few years. And so some of the highlights would be the fact that we prepared under very difficult fiscal conditions, and passed, thankfully, to the community, a budget for the 2021 school year. We, as part of that budget development and budget planning, we did a lot of fiscal planning around our long-range staffing, something the board had charged me with, the finance committee had charged me with, is a plan of how we're going to look over the next few years. You know, we all have acknowledged that our enrollment is shrinking, and thus we need to kind of right-size. So the administrative team and I spent probably a couple months, just under a couple months, talking about how we would right-size from a staffing perspective. We, remember, there's the two key words tonight are flexibility and ambiguity. And what I mean by that is although we've made it past this first little obstacle of the passing of the school budget, which this year we did solely by absentee ballot, which went, you know, after we got them out, after all the districts got them out, it went reasonably well. And we passed the budget. The next thing that the, that we have to plan for is what the governor's going to do in terms of these look-back periods. And we've already been through one look-back period. The next one ends on June 30th, and, and then the next one ends on December 30th. We just don't know, right? He's indicated that we could be looking at anywhere up to, at one point he said 50%, then it was downgraded to about 20% reduction in state aid. And it's worth spending a couple minutes on this, because this is really what may have the most impact on us this coming year. And that is, I don't know whether the look-back period is gonna be coincident to any federal action that's taken to help the states mitigate the financial difficulties. New York is in terrible financial straits. Last, I heard it's well over $60 million. Their money to become whole is gonna have to come from somewhere. And we're just making assumptions at this point, thinking that the governor is waiting to see what the federal government does. And depending on what they do, will impact us. If they come through, it is an election year, and they supplant the state with money, this may be not as bad as we anticipate. If they don't, as the governor's indicated, the money is gonna come out of three areas: healthcare, government, and schools. And 20% to us equates to somewhere in the vicinity of $900,000 to $1 million, which on a budget that's about 70-plus percent staffing, it's logical that we would have to potentially impact staffing, and potentially impact it, which is never ideal, either before the school year begins or during the school year. So some of this is a wait-and-see, but I pontificate it a little bit, because we have a plan, a confidential plan, that will help us navigate that. It's a contingency plan, should we have to execute it at various levels to help us get to where we need to go to provide quality of services that we're accustomed to here in Chatham. We also, you know, there are some things in that plan that were a little bit of a disappointment. We didn't execute the development of a facilities plan to the fidelity that we had expected. We're not gonna look back, as you know. I think last meeting, you approved the hiring of a new facilities director. That director starts on July 1st. One of their priorities, probably of many, is, and this gentleman does have experience in this area, will be to take a look as to where that was left off, and how we can get to where we are now, to where we wanna go in, in short order. And, you know, having a maintenance plan is gonna help us inform future decisions and prioritize future work. We also, way back when, knew that we were on the tail end of Phase II of a project, and we knew that in that project, we couldn't address all of the items that we wanted to address. And so we've made, the facilities committee has met once in the last six months to take a look at the gap, the items that never made it to the capital project and/or items that have presented themselves since, to give a sense for where we may need to go in the future. I think given the current fiscal landscape, we wanna be, we wanna proceed very cautiously, and that may not be as fast a track as, a track as we originally thought. But we are in Phase II of the capital project. If COVID has any upside at all, the school closure did allow us to start, accelerate the mobilization, mobilization of the crews. They are already onsite. If you pass by the middle school or the high school, you might be able to painfully see that the work is well underway. That has a benefit. The benefit is that we hope that that will keep us on schedule, because if you remember, it is very critical that we close this project out early fall, and Mike can submit all the submittals, so that we make sure that our aid flows the next year. There's a timing concern there, and we believe that being able to start the capital projects early is gonna help us in that regard.
Is Denise still on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, but.
In wellness, last year about this time, we approved, the board approved an expenditure, expenditure to have a couple independent consultants come in at our special education program, the continuum of services, how we are staffed in the area of pupil personal services, so school counseling, social work, school psychology. And they, I'm very pleased, and I think I may have mentioned this, maybe not at the last report, we had tremendous participation, our teachers, our administrators, our teachers, our teaching aides, our teaching assistants. Our teachers, our administrators, our teachers, our teaching aides, our teaching assistants, our aides, were all tremendously cooperative with the evaluators. They've got a lot of data points, a lot of interviews, a lot of information. The plan is a three-phase plan, and it's really at the end of Phase 3 that we were going to realize the full report, which we had expected to have by now. But because of the closure, Phase 3 could not move forward. It was a lot of classroom observations and additional surveying. So Phase 3 has been pushed off to the fall, but that doesn't mean that it hasn't been fruitful. The lead evaluator and I have met on several occasions. She's given me some preliminary data that's helped inform our decision-making. In fact, at the last board meeting, the last couple of board meetings, we eliminated a counselor at the elementary school, and we hired a school psychologist. Actually, the hire is on tonight's, we interviewed some amazing candidates, and we were able to get an acceptance from our top candidate. The resolution is on tonight's agenda to approve her to join our team. The administrative team and I have met on several occasions, and we're finalizing the plan to slightly restructure or better align, I should say, our human resources, our PPS resources, to our student need. The student needs have changed over the years, and that was primarily the justification for making this modification. This is probably going to, could hear this in almost any of these categories. The other concern, deep concern that we have as an administrative team, is we don't fully know, and maybe can't even comprehend, the impact that this closure has had on our students, their social, emotional, and mental well-being. Most superintendents, both school administrators, are anxiously awaiting, you know, what we do in the fall and how we bring students back and how we deal with some of the emotional trauma that could be a result of everything that we've been through. So, you know, that has not fallen on deaf ears. We know that that has got to be one of the top priorities, because if we don't have students who are here or even remote, ready to learn and present, what we try to teach them is, you know, counterproductive. So that's the fiscal goal. I'm sorry, that was part of the wellness goal. We also, you know, celebrated the first half of the year with Kristen and her team bringing the Bright program, and we, you know, we got a half a year in. We think that has a lot of promise. That's where we have a school counselor and a teaching assistant helping to get students who quickly need to be, have some behavioral issues, quickly re-regulated or regulated, and back to the classroom. So the disruption in time is minimized, and then they can have a better continuity of learning. We also set out, had a goal, and I kept this on here because it was kind of entertaining to some extent. We had a goal of improving student absenteeism. You know, if you walk into MED, you've got that wonderful sign that was tracking student attendance. The assistant principals and principals, but, you know, Justin Forrest and Brett did a wonderful job sending home letters with parents and having conversation to really try to get kids here. Kind of the same idea, if the kids aren't here and we're not in contact with them, we can't teach them, they're not going to grow, they're not going to have the success. So, you know, with COVID coming along, the buildings closed, and next year not knowing what our plan will look like yet, and the fact we don't know how comfortable parents will be in sending children despite whatever plan we have, student absenteeism will probably take a different, have to take a different approach to that next year. We also, of particular note, had done that wonderful survey last year, that climate survey, and we had, and Matt, you said on the wellness committee, we had so hoped to administer that survey again this year so that we had some data points to look and compare to. But given the situation and the disruption to the environment, we felt it was futile to do that. So we did not re-administer that. We do hope to do that in the future. Under academic, a number of goals that we have will be pushed forward a little bit. A couple of key comments to make here is remember that the entire testing program was abandoned this year. So the traditional state tests, 3 through 8, and all of the regions did not take place. They are not the only, but they are one important data set that we use. We won't have that available to us to inform our decision-making. Part of the summer retreat with the administrators is to take a look at that data and to have that partially inform our decision-making when it comes to setting academic goals. Now, thankfully though, we do have some local assessments. We have iReady and SRI and a number of other tools that we will have to use to try to determine where students are. And in addition to their social, emotional well-being and the impact that COVID, the COVID closure has had on them, our second biggest concern is to figure out where they are academically and what interventions we're going to have to put in place to try to get them back on track. Now, some probably have not lost a step. Parents have done a wonderful job as their, as teachers to their students, but we also know that that's, the equity there may not be the same, and we need to make sure that we can properly assess the students and move forward regardless of the plan. You know, it'd be great to have all of our students back like normal in the fall, that's probably less than likely. And so we have to find a way, whether they're here physically part of the time or none of the time, how we assess their learning moving forward and where they are and what they need. And I will tell you that the administrators have a concern. In a time where we may have an increase for intervention services and student supports, we're going through what could be a very tough fiscal time. So we're going to have to be creative because the students deserve that. They don't deserve this large gap in their education. Summer curriculum projects, they're on tonight's agenda. We kept an eye towards prioritizing those projects that look to see how we can improve our remote learning, those projects that were focused on standards that will be changing, although some of that's being delayed. And we have a number of quality projects. The school, the building principals, the administrators took a look at those projects, vetted them, improved them, and that's what you're looking at tonight. Tonight's just the approval of a project. Don't forget that once the project's over, we're going to present that back to you for approval in the fall. So you'll have a chance to see those projects and see what they come. Tonight, we had a conversation about the district, district-wide safety plan. This year, we made some major strides. We brought in Need of Risk Management as a consultant. We had some very clear building and student safety goals this year. I think we made some pretty nice progress up until the closure on them. Our building-level safety plans are much improved from the past. The principals were just about to have building-level safety team meetings locally. That didn't come to fruition, but we'll have to, you know, do that once we're back together physically. I would say that safety and security took a little bit of a backseat, admittedly because we didn't have any students here. And so we can't lose sight of that. That was a top, one of our big priorities going into this, and so we need to make sure that that continues once we come into some sort of normalcy. We will continue to do tabletop exercises next year. We had also planned to do some walkthroughs of the physical campus and some exiting, not to get into too many details about our emergency plan, but some of that, again, was delayed because of the closure. And we still had talked about a pilot. We purchased some additional security cameras to do an in-house project, and we, that kind of fell a little bit off schedule. That's going to go back on schedule this summer. IT department is securing some wiring bids, and we hope to have that back on track. So again, I did take a few minutes. I just tried to pick and choose some selected highlights and acknowledge the fact that, you know, COVID threw us a little curveball, where we could continue forward on some of the items we did. The administrators and I are in the process of selecting a retreat date. We typically meet mid to end of July, and that's where we're going to spend a significant amount of time this year, taking a look at all of these, seeing which ones need to be pushed forward, see which ones were accomplished and can come off, and then also which, what new action items need to be added to reach our goals. So that's kind of just a, maybe not so quick update, but I didn't want to shortchange the board on at least knowing where we are right now. I do have, the principals have joined us as a panelist, they're listening in. You know, if we were in person, like last June, we would have had to given you a full end-of-the-year review, but if you have any specific questions, they're here to support the administrative team as well.
Are there any questions? Comments? Okay. Then I guess we will move on to the professional development plan update.
Thank you, we're done. Let me move this back to slide one. So typically, Donna here would be with you to give you her annual report on the professional development plan, but, and I'm just going to make some preliminary, some brief comments. We have an amazing professional development committee. It is, it contains teachers, administrators, teacher leaders, a true cross-section of stakeholders that weigh in on formulating a plan to better meet the needs of our teachers. With that said, they always go back and they analyze what has happened the year before. They generally align their activities to the board, goals and priority objectives. So last year, they created guiding questions that were around our goals of instruction, wellness, and community. They took a look at programs that we instituted, the instructional innovation coach, a very successful program, our psychologist coach, and some activities around family engagement. And they then reviewed the plan, and they come up with a whole new plan for this year. Why I'm pausing and going back to the word flexibility and ambiguity, as much as we have a plan in place, I think to suggest that we actually know what our professional development plan will look like today would be a little misleading, mainly because I think it's going to change dramatically. It's going to change dramatically once we make a determination as to what next year is going to look like and what our teachers are going to need to better support our students. Remember, it would, shout out to all the teachers who were thrust into a new environment that for many was very foreign, and they did it within a few days. And we managed, right? We got through, we thought it was going to be a few weeks and then a few more weeks, and before you knew it, it was three months. So be it. We had an approach that was, let's try to do the best we can and do right by our students, not hold them, hold them harmless for the fact that they are learning in a much different modality than they've ever been accustomed to. However, I do want to, and this kind of be part of my comments with the future too, acknowledge the fact that it was far from perfect. You know, it was fraught with a lot of challenges, all of which we've gotten really good feedback. So Beth, you should know that we did do an exhaustive survey with the teachers. They have provided us a tremendous amount of feedback on their experience, so it makes logical sense that you're suggesting we reach out to parents and students as well. The feedback that we got has now been vetted by the teacher leaders, and they're kind of, and we've got some really good stuff to inform our decision-making forward. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the comments. So as much as we have an existing professional development plan, it's attached to your agenda for the board. I want to be very careful to say that we want to provide the best development that our teachers are going to need to be successful next year. And with that, we know that we need to raise the bar on engagement, student engagement, facilitation of remote learning, and other aspects that I'll mention in my next comments. Any questions or concerns about the current plan as it exists?
And I noticed Beth has her hand up right now, so.
No, I don't.
No, it is, I think that's still up front. I think I can lower all hands. There we go, I cleared it in case. Are we good there, or?
You're good now. No hands up.
And so my last.
Next to your comment.
Yeah, so, for those, and I think we have, we have, let's leave the screen up. You know, we have a small number of attendees tonight. I see some teachers and some administrators, some others. What I was just about, what I was starting to say is, you know, it was far from perfect, right? And the feedback we got involved that perhaps some of the remote learning was not rigorous enough, we didn't maybe as use effective, as effectively use video as we could, it didn't, it kind of lacked some structure. Not only did the parents appreciate that, but I think the students thrive better than the structure. We didn't really have a really good, and again, please, understand, because you see what's happening in Chatham, but understand, we're not alone. I'm not making excuses, but many, if not most, all districts have struggled with some of the same, you know, challenges. You know, I sit on the Questar 3 superintendent's committee, and we have, you know, at one point, we were having three meetings a week. We're now down to weekly meetings. We talk about all these same items, right? We're not, we're not unique necessarily in Chatham. All the same things that I'm telling you have been challenges with all the districts. And we're trying to take a collaborative approach. If they did something that worked well, they found a best practice, we're sharing because we want to borrow it, we want to learn from each other. So that's really the part of this next month, month and a half, that's going to be important. But we know we need to, and teachers acknowledged it as well, in the survey and in the data that we've acquired tells us that, you know, students need more structure, students need, you know, we held, we had a C and an I for complete or incomplete. Can't continue like that, right? We will have to have a grading structure so students have feedback in terms of their performance. And we can't hide behind those students who potentially use this to, you know, there's those students who have access issues, and there's other challenges. But there are students who clearly said, listen, I'm not going to school, I, it's an excuse to hide behind it too, right? So we have to hold, there's got to be a higher degree of accountability. We know all that, and in the structures that we're going to build for next year, that we'll all be taking into consideration. So with that said, I've gotten about a half a dozen ask the superintendent emails from parents, pretty much all asking and stating the same thing, some of which I just mentioned. But what I really wanted to go on record as saying is that we will have to develop parallel paths. We have what we see, and I did send out a communication to all of our parents on Friday, to try from a higher level, higher level, kind of explain some of this, because there are so many details that are just unknown. We know that we need to, you know, there's three scenarios that we're going to be under, right? The 30,000-foot view is either, we're all coming back and we're all going to be together like we were in the past, very unlikely. We're not coming back and we're all going to be remote. Well, we know what that looks like, we just have to get better at delivering the services. Or it's going to be some hybrid, which is highly likely. If we continue Phase 4 coming up in early July, it's likely that the expectation is going to be that we have a hybrid. Now, this is the important part for those who aren't necessarily up to date with this every day. As much as I'd like to think that Superintendent D'Angelo has, wields this power, I really only have control over a few snow days. I have no control over saying that our students can learn from home remotely solely. I can't even say that they can learn halftime home and halftime at school. That all has to be guidance that comes by way of regulation or law from the state education department or the governor's office or both. So I know that that's, that's where that, it's very difficult, because parents want answers as to what we're going to do. And we're making contingency plans, we're building scenarios, but the scenarios are only going to be a good, and we have to, because the timing on this is going to be critical. But we have to wait until we have clear guidance as to what we're going to be allowed to do. And to put that into perspective, and this is a scary thought, the, all the different task force that have been formed, either by the governor's office or vice education department, are meeting in the next few weeks, and it's reported that they're not going to report out to the Board of Regents until July 13th, and that it may be at least a few more weeks before any clear-cut guidance comes from these agencies as to what we can do or not do at the start of school. It doesn't leave us a lot of time for all the myriad of challenges in terms of transportation, our facilities, temperature checks, all the, probably hundreds and hundreds of items of things that we need to talk about, and the administrators I have begun to talk about. So please rest assured that this is a daily conversation. This is top priority. We need to figure out a way to safely educate our students and assure our parents that if we are going to have students physically in the buildings, that when they're here, we're taking the precautions to the extent that, you know, the CDC and others recommend so that we can keep them safe. I never want to set myself up for low expectations. I just think that next year is going to be challenging because there's a lot that I just think that next year is gonna be challenging, because there's a lot that we just don't know. And we may very well be dealing with it as we, as we go forward. You know, we could come back to school and we could, you know, have a rise in cases and, and maybe we're out for a few weeks, we just don't know. But we, I guess the answer is that we have to be prepared for pretty much all those different likely scenarios, because by the time we have to make that decision, there isn't gonna be a time to figure it out. So I just urge our parents who might watch this in a video to be a little patient with us. We will communicate, we will over-communicate, we will be very transparent with our plans. We will, as Beth has suggested, and we will elicit feedback. Your partners, you've been partners throughout this whole process with us, we cannot be successful without you. But rest assured that I don't think a night goes by where I don't lay in bed thinking about one aspect of what we're gonna confront ourselves with. So with that, I'll open, you know, I know there wasn't a lot of detail in that explanation, but I just really wanted to assure people that if you're not necessarily hearing a well-defined plan, it's not because we don't wanna come up with one, it's just we're waiting on details. So I'll open it up. Is it okay if I open up for questions, Rachel?
Yes, go ahead. Anyone have their hand up?
And I'll, the administrative team, if anybody wants to chime in, Mike, Lucas, Kristen, John, or Mike Durans, certainly welcome.
Anyone? Okay, if there's no questions or comments. Are you sure there's none here? Okay. And we thank you very much, Dr. D'Angelo, for all those updates. We will move on in our agenda. To old business. R56, be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt policies 5661 wellness and 5662 physical wellness as read at the April 21st, 2020 and May 19th, 2020 board meeting. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I just wanna say this wellness policy was like a year and a half in the making, and I'm very happy how it turned out. And thank you to the teachers and administrators who collaborated with us to develop it and for Pat who, you know, put in a lot of hours with me on this committee to make it happen. So thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business. R57, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the results of the 2020 to 2021 annual budget vote and election held on June 16th, 2020, as reported by Deborah Potenberg, district clerk and chairperson of the annual meeting as listed below. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second? Questions or comments?
I just have a comment. You know, told to me that we sent out a lot of ballots, which I was unaware of, and it kinda seemed odd that we got the normal amount back. So I don't, I don't know what to make of that, but I, I thought it was curious when Sal told us how many had to go out. And I wondered what that was gonna look like, so I'm really glad and that everything went the way it did.
I, I think we got double the normal amount, didn't we? We got 1,600 back.
Yeah, it wasn't quite double, but to, Sal, what was the number you had to send out?
Well, we sent out just about 7,600 and we got back, I think, 1795, Deb just said, 1795. So I know, we, the average for many of the districts that we talked to was just about 2X. And I think one of our biggest elections, a good turnout here, is about 800 voters. So, you know, we're roughly around, you know, twice the in-person turnout.
Right. And congratulations to Pat and Matt for going on another term and to Destiny Hollenback, who will be joining us as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd also like to thank Debbie for all the work she did on that, you know, all the stuff she had to do for that election.
Thank you, Muriel. I'm remiss in, Debbie has, I know, you know, part of it's her job, but boy, if she hasn't, I'm guessing two, three times the amount of time she was here on weekends, again, she was here late nights, she really made it happen. So, and the people from the Board of Elections, our election inspectors, who that evening helped us make sure that everything went well and was, you know, transparent, we streamed it. I think it all, when all is said and done, even after a little bit of the panic about our ballots not coming out of the printer for a few days and finding out that that was a statewide issue anyway, all in all, it turned out pretty well. And if you notice in the NISBA stuff, 99% of the budgets across the state passed, so communities around were very supportive of their schools.
Thank you to everyone who helped out with that and to the community. Okay, so I'm moving on to R58, whereas the Chatham Central School District participates in the New York State Teachers' Retirement System, and whereas on November 24th, 2009, the Board of Education of the Chatham Central School District by resolution established a Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund pursuant to Section 6R of the General Municipal Law, and whereas the Board of Education has determined it is also appropriate to establish a sub-fund within said Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund pursuant to Section 6R of the General Municipal Law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Chatham Central School District pursuant to Section 6R of the General Municipal Law as listed below establishes the CRS Reserve. May I have the motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mike is prepared to just make a couple brief comments if you'd like, just to explain what this really is.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
So, we had the Retirement Contribution Reserve established in 2009 that was allowed for ERS or non-instructional salaries only. So they've been, actually, NISBA and ASBO have been fighting for this for, I don't know, 10, 12 years. So Cuomo signed in, he's allowing for teacher retirement system payments also. So that's why we talked about this in finance committee, we wanna add this. There's two caveats, you can do 2% of the TRS salaries from the previous year is the most you can put in each year, and then up to 10% total. But this'll be, this will fit very well in our finance reserve plan, so that's why we're recommending doing this.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to consensus agenda. R59, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda K through M as written. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any items for future agenda?
I have an item I'd like to propose quickly.
Okay, go ahead, Matt.
So Sal sent home a communication to our parents, maybe that was via Facebook, regarding some of the diversity inclusion agenda that's working its way through American culture right now. And I, you know, I took a moment to think about, you know, what, what are we doing as a district? You know, we're not a very diverse district. This means we have to work extra hard to, to make sure we, we're doing the right thing at the right time. You know, I looked at our policies, we've got ziggy for all students and equal opportunity and non-discrimination policies. These are mostly driven based on law. Even, even the definition of discrimination is probably much too narrowly defined in terms of what we have in policy. So, you know, I'd like to see something proactive, not reactive, you know, the way our policies are written. I'd like to have some evidence of whether we're doing a good or a bad job, or more importantly, what we could be doing better. And, and that's, that's, you know, I've got some specific thoughts, which is that, you know, if we were a private company out in the world, we would be looking at making sure that we have staff diversity reporting, perhaps even a student diversity report. We'd be doing unconscious bias training, we'd be doing diversity listening sessions. So some of these things may be happening to some extent, but if a community member asked me, what are we doing today? I could not answer that we are doing the best we could be doing here. So I know there's a lot going on this year, and we did some amazing work with the wellness agenda over the last few years, but I'd like to table a diversity and inclusion agenda for the coming year.
So for, for like update, like what we're doing, both as a policy sector, I think also, just to build on what you're saying, to maybe, like, could I, I know that, like, the teachers are, you know, we're an educational institution, and I'm sure they're teaching up-to-date, you know, up-to-date lessons within, including lessons within their planning and everything, maybe like an insight of where we are-
I mean specifically, I mean-
How this is being, how this is being addressed within the school?
Yeah, I mean, if this was a conversation in a private organization and we were doing the social governance that is now commonplace, diversity reporting, bias training, and listening sessions are standard. As far as I know, we're not doing any of those things. So yes, some policy work, but also I wanna know that we're doing stuff. So this is, this would be a long process to get to a place where I would say, yes, we're doing the best we could do, but we have to start someplace. So maybe some reporting to start off on what are we doing? And then figure out where the, do some gap analysis to understand, you know, what is, what is best in class right now? You know, this predates most of us on the board, but we lost a whole category of students some years ago, because they didn't feel included. They went off and started their own school. So we've got some track record of failure here, and I would like to see that, you know, we're, we're thinking about how that, you know, won't happen again, can't happen again here.
Okay. So, I guess first we'll start with diversity reporting on what we're doing and the gap analysis as a presentation. Like I just wanted, before I get consensus, just clearly define what the future agenda-
Yeah, I think, I think perhaps this is for the district to propose a diversity and inclusion agenda, and maybe we start there. I don't wanna narrow down and say, this is a report or this is a policy. I just, you know, generally wanna say as a board member that the district is, along with all the other priorities we have, this is another priority.
Okay.
I gotta say, Matt, I think Sal summed it up a few years back with everyone, every day. If that doesn't, you know, sit well with you and we need to go further, then I don't know what else we can do, but everyone, every day means it all. But, you know, so-
Well, I think first in this department, just get a baseline of what we're doing.
Yep.
More, what future agenda is for. Okay? So do we wanna go around and get consensus to pay that on the future agenda?
On what?
On the future agenda list. Does everybody understand what's being asked for? I guess is that?
No.
Okay. He's being asked for kind of to look into what we're doing in the diversity sector. Like what are we doing as a district, both in policy and procedure and curriculum, kind of an overview of it first, and then any gap analysis or discussions that would come from that. Is that correct, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, specifically, you know, you talk about diversity, which is the differences, right? But then you also talk about inclusion and what are we doing about that? And those two things go together. So that's the agenda. In any, in any privately-held, large organization, diversity and inclusion is an area of corporate governance.
But you know, we are not, we are not a corporation, we are not a private, you know, we're not a private company. And I take a little, when you said about a whole group of people that we did not serve and they left and started their own school, what was, what? I certainly don't remember something like that, that a whole people from our school, they left and started their own school.
It's perhaps not central to the point here, but I do understand that we, we lost, we have a private school that started a few years ago in our district, and is in response to the students that had moved into the district not feeling included culturally.
Well, whatever that incident is-
Yeah.
Let's stick to whether or not we put this on the future agenda, okay? Does anyone have any questions about what Matt's future agenda proposal is? Let's start there. Are there any other questions on that? Okay, then I'll just go around and get consensus to put it on the future agenda list, okay? I'm just gonna go down the list. Beth?
I, I totally agree, and I remember, not so much a group of kids that left, but I remember some incidences when my kids went through school that I had to work through.
Okay. So Beth is a yes. Craig?
I'm not real clear what he wants us to dig into, and I'm a no.
Okay, Craig's a no. Okay, Muriel?
No.
Okay. Meg?
Unsure.
Unsure, is how he said?
Yeah.
Okay. Matt, you proposed it, so I'm putting you on the yes side. Pat?
I'm kind of a no, because I really think Sal's, every student, every day, is kind of meets what Chatham's approach to this whole issue. So I guess I would say no. I think we're, we've already somewhat addressed it.
Okay, Denise?
Baseline. I think it's important in its own way, but I think in the school community, if we can emphasize respect all around the block and so on, which I believe that we do, I see, I would go with a vote of no for this, okay?
Um, hang on, I'm missing someone here. Graham, are you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay, I don't see you on the list anywhere, but go ahead.
My name is Rachel on here, because I didn't receive a link, so I went in through your link.
Okay.
Rachel with an A, A.L.
Rachel with an A too. Okay, Rachel, go ahead.
I'm an absolute yes. I frankly don't understand why we would not, why anybody would be against doing something like this. I think it's important for us to look at, an analysis of how we are making sure that we are, have curriculum that is teaching about diversity and inclusion, that we have people that are going through, not like biased training, things like that. I think it's absolutely important.
Okay, so you are a yes. Okay.
I'd like to make a follow-up comment before we tally votes, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I've just been voted in for three more years. I will, I will bring back a specific proposal and I will floor it every meeting until it's considered.
Okay, thanks for that, Brett. I would also vote yes. Somehow I'm coming up with four and four, though. Who am I missing?
Megan was trying to speak again, if that was possible.
I'm sorry, okay, go ahead, next.
That's okay, so I apologize. So the proposal is just to have it put on, it's not stating that anything is being done incorrectly, it's just strictly to put the-
Basically what we do is-
To put the review on the, on the agenda.
So there would be a board presentation on what we're doing. It is essentially what we do. So we put the, what we do is, we'll do a presentation and see the baseline, investigate what have we done with this, where are we at? And that would be the board presentation, and then from there have a discussion on, on whether there was a gap analysis or something, and then move forward. So there's no action being taken, it's just a literal future agenda item, future agenda presentation on what we're doing. doing. That's where we start.
And, uh, so I will change myself from an unknown to a yes.
Okay. Good. Okay, so we have five to four, so yes is win. Okay, so can you add that to the, who is it? Debbie, do you add that to the list? Thank you. Okay, do we have any more? Any more future agenda items? Moving on to a newer topic. I, I'm sorry, did Mrs. Reno have her hand up or somebody just had their hand up? I'm good to move on, right? Okay.
It was me, Rachel. I had, I, I had my hand up, so.
All right, I'm just trying to keep track of like the agenda and, uh, the participants here. Okay, so right before adjournment here, I would like to say a few words because, uh, this is my last meeting during this term. And, um, I really just want you all to know that this last three years on the board has been an adventure that has added to my personal and professional growth in this journey of life. And it's really been quite a rewarding experience with you all. There's been late nights, there's been three-hour committee meetings, there's contentious discussions. Um, we've produced a 500-page policy manual in 10 months. We did implementation of board governance, a handbook with operating procedures that are distinct to Chatham, um, implementation of a district-wide planning process, operating procedures, streamlined committee operations, and augmented accountability. In the past three years, we've really overhauled how we have functioned as a body of nine. And in doing so, we've augmented our effectiveness and produced a really collaborative and cohesive dynamic. And it's been a great experience to get to this point. Um, I thank each of you on the board for being on this journey with me and all of the wisdom you have imparted. Um, the time you volunteer to the civic duty and the mental load that you carry to ensure the best for Chatham students really needs to be recognized. Um, I think it's something, something that a lot of times it's very thankless and it's hard to get people to run for the board and, you know, I just want people to know that everyone here does a lot and gives it their all. And I've been really proud to have done that all with you. Dr. D'Angelo, you have proven you are a level-headed and compassionate leader and you have my utter confidence that you will lead our district to success and our students. And Mr. Chetty, I know your job is thankless as well, but I recognize and I hope the community does as well, that your prudent planning has allowed this district to strategically maintain the integrity of our programming while being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers. And that's really an accomplishment in itself. I know a number of you on this board and in this community were a bit disappointed with my decision not to seek reelection, but most of you know that I had a three-year plan. And, uh, I see Melanie Spock is in the attendance and she knows I have one. It was a three-year plan and one thing that I'm good at is sticking to plans, making them and sticking to them. And in these three years, I have accomplished what I set out to do. I've gotten the experience I wanted. I've contributed everything in my skillset to make it happen. And, uh, I'm looking forward to my next adventure. I have full confidence in this board and with the addition of Destiny Hollenbach, who is truly one of Chatham's finest, to continue to lead this district with integrity and professionalism. And I'm signing off tonight, very content with this rewarding experience and proud to have been part of it. So I will always support you all in your roles as board members and hopefully as friends as well. And I hope we stay in touch. And, uh, thank you for the last three years. It's been great. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.